There's everybody. Okay.
So we're going to move to the new business. The Hunter County is here for presentation on radio tower. That they are looking at putting across the street in Jugtown Mountain Park. So this is, this is just a little board of the town. Kind of into what's going on. They did come back in 2021. Sound right?
Yeah.
With, with the same proposal, I guess it's moved on to the next step. So.
Yeah, whoever speaks just kind of where you are.
See everybody on line two. Okay. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Katrina Campbell and I am the county council for the county of Hunterdon and a longtime Bethlehem township president. I took a look at your agenda this morning and I realized that we're essentially the only thing on. So I really appreciate all of them coming out tonight. I know it's getting cold out. We really would like to get this project started at the county. So we appreciate you not asking us to come next month. So thank you. I'm joined tonight by three members of the county team. I have county administrator Brad Meyer, county architect Frank Bell, county public director of public safety and emergency management coordinator Brian Fahy. Then we also have with us David Stern from VCOM and he's the telecommunications engineer for this project. I'm happy to see that your municipal OEM coordinator, Alenzi, is virtually in attendance tonight as this project affects emergency communications in Bethlehem as well as your surrounding communities. We submitted a package of information to the board. In case the members didn't get a chance to review it, benefit of the public or those online, I'm just going to give you a really quick overview of why we're here, what we're asking for. And then basically you can ask all the questions, make recommendations as you see fit. The county has identified a deficiency in emergency responder radio coverage in the area of Jugtown Mountain, to be general. I don't have to tell all of you about the many accidents that occur each year on a stretch of 78, especially with the added complication of the rock fall mitigation. Hunters have radio coverage when they need it on 78. The county originally acquired block 32 lot 51, which is a five acre parcel that's surrounded by the two parcels that make up, which is just across the street from where we are now. The county's intention was to use that unencumbered piece to build this radio tower. However, because the piece of land was landlocked, in order to access that piece, the access to get to that piece would have been more destructive apart than what we're proposing today. So we did on the five acres, the idea was to put the tower on it. Is to put the tower just off the parking.
Yeah, wherever you guys eat, Ali.
Anybody who's on Zoom?
So just off the existing driveway and the parking lot, right off to the side there is where we're proposing this cap. So the idea is not to disturb the parkland any more than it already is. Since the land is de-restricted as parkland, the county was required to obtain what's called a change in use from green acres. This change in use process is probably why most of you are already familiar with this project. The county had to apply to green acres to determine that the change in use process was appropriate, meaning that what we're doing doesn't rise to the level of a green acres diversion. If you've ever heard of a green acres diversion, that's when you're actually removing parkland and no longer using it as parkland. You have to go to the state house commission, get approval. It takes forever. It's a nightmare. They said, we didn't rise to that level. So we weren't actually removing the parkland from parkland use. Because some of the use actually relates to the parkland as well as the emergency tower. But as part of that process, the county agreed to incorporate the five acres that make up lot 50, that five acre lot that we bought. We're going to incorporate it into Jugtown Preserve. So it will be parks. We're adding five more acres to the park. The reason we're here tonight is for a capital improvement review. As I explained in my cover later letter, for those of you who've got a chance to read it, the municipal land use law does not require the county to obtain a formal site plan from this board. Instead, we're here tonight to explain the project and answer any questions the board may have, as well as listen to your recommendations from the board and its professionals. And we're going to take those into consideration before we take the project out today. So what exactly are we asking? The county is seeking to construct a 180 foot lattice tower and associated equipment on lot 32 lot 55. The location of the tower is proposed just off the existing gravel driveway and parking lot. The purpose of this project is to erect an emergency radio tower for use by emergency first responder radio equipment. This use will also allow for a better signal on radios used by county park rangers who patrol the park and provide emergency assistance to those who use the park. And for those of you who know where some of the holes and coverage are, that will help the tower, your tower parkland too. Cause the self-service gets a little rough, the self-service, the radio service gets a little rocky. The question I'm sure you're wondering, as we're all sitting here with cell phones in our pockets that maybe have one bar on it, if we're lucky today, is does the county have plans to co-locate a cell antenna on this tower? The answer is no. The county has agreed as part of the change in use process with green acres that this tower will only be used as a radio tower. This doesn't mean that there is no chance that the tower could be used for something in the future, but it would require a different approval from green acres, which would include another public hearing, possibly state house commission approval. Cause it may rise to a level of a diversion. If that's something the township felt strongly about, that you want a better cell. So we know what the area is like here. That's something we could certainly talk about in the future. I spoke to our engineer before the meeting and we could design a tower in such a way that it could support that in the future. If that's something that was important to the town. For now, we're just here to make sure the first responders radios work when they need it. Before I turn it over to the board to ask questions, when actually I'm going to have Mr. Stern come up and give you a little presentation. I wanted to address one more question that I know came up in the past. The township's ordinance requires for cellular antennas to be placed on township property before private property. VCOM prepared a coverage analysis for both locations. So we could address that very question. Honestly, if we could host a tower that, you know, if you could host the tower instead of us putting on parkland, that would have saved us a lot of trouble with green acres. Unfortunately, it was determined that the county's property is the most suitable to address the coverage deficiency. Mr. Stern can address that in greater detail. And if you have specific questions, you can ask him. I just want to mention that upfront because I know that that was something that's important. It's part of your ordinance. There are a few ordinances that we cannot meet based upon one of them is, I think you can't be within 500 feet of parkland. Well, we're going to be in the middle of your park. And so obviously we can't meet that, the height of the tower, we're not going to meet that. But some of the other ones, I think we can, but Mr. Stern can go over, but it's not a lighted tower, some of that stuff. So we can, we can go over it. And so I'm going to let him give, give his much more detailed spiel to you. And then if you have questions, let us know.
Katrina, really quickly, right just before we start, I know that this isn't technically a formal public hearing like the board is used to. It's a section 31 review, as you indicated, which means that the board can review this and make recommendations to the county. However, I do want to mark some exhibits. I want to swear everybody in just for purposes of continuity with the hearing. So we'll mark it A1, your cover letter and the plan and everything that was submitted with regard to that. I have your cover letter dated November 18, 2022. And then I also have the plans, site name, Bethlehem Township, and these are dated March 8th, it looks like 2019, with a revision date through, it looks like May 8th, 2019. So we'll mark that as A1. And then as each individual comes up, is necessary to testify, we'll swear them in.
Thanks.
Okay. My name is David Stern. I'm a principal from VCOM, V hyphen C O M M.
Okay, David, why don't I swear you in before you start? You swear the testimony, you're about to give this board the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And your last name is spelled S T E R N?
Correct.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm David Stern. I'm the vice president and co-founder of VCOM telecommunications engineering. We're located at 2147 Route 27 in Edison, New Jersey. And I have 35 years of experience in the field of wireless frequency, wireless and radio communications and radio frequency communication safety. And I, and VCOM supports commercial wireless carriers and public safety agencies throughout the Northeast of the United States. Me specifically, I have a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the University of Illinois, Champaign-Urbana. I had, I began my career at Motorola in their Cyor division for six years. I was then the director of engineering for Cyor 1 Comcast for seven years, which is the Cyor carrier that is now owned by AT&amp;T that covered central New Jersey, southern New Jersey, Delaware and Philadelphia. For the last 27 years, I've been with VCOM and we provide engineering for public safety systems throughout the area. And currently I am the lead RF consultant for the following agencies, including Hunterdon County, the state of New Jersey, Morris County, Somerset County, Union County, Cumberland County, Cape May County, the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, as well as the New York City MTA. I am also the technical lead for the FCC Regional Planning Committee in the Philadelphia, New York metro area. I've also been found as an expert in wireless communications before more than 200 land use boards in the state of New Jersey and an expert at the US federal district court and Superior Court in Ocean County. I've also testified in front of Alexandria Township, Clinton Township, Franklin Township, Kingwood Township and Tewksbury Township. To, to just to re-summarize what we're talking about here, Hunter County reached out to us probably five years ago to talk about their coverage deficiency in the northwest and western portions of Hunterdon County. And they had identified the Jugmont, Jug, Jugtown, pardon me. Jugtown Mountain Reserve Park as an area where they were looking at some property and that they had some property available. And we went through a few directions that we just, we all described to, where we got to this one particular parcel in the park that, that would work for, for the, for the county, for their system. We looked at it, we evaluated the tower, we, we ran an FAA analysis on it to figure out could, how tall could we make the tower? Without requiring the tower to be lit and we came up that we could go up to 199 feet in total height of all the tower and all of its pertinences, running antennas at the top of the tower would have to be lower than a height of 199 feet. And we did apply to the FAA and the FAA gave us a thumbs up saying that 100 and 180 foot tower with 19 foot antennas on top, the stick antennas, we would not require any lighting on that tower. So we, we prepared the initial drawings, which you see from in 2019, identifying this location, coming up with the, the tower and, and the features around it to try to solve the, the problem. I'm going to quickly go through some exhibits here. We'll mark this as A3 or A2.
We'll mark that as A2. If you could just give us the title, the date and who prepared it.
A2 with today's date on it is Hunterdon County Public Safety Communications, Bethlehem Township, New Jersey, existing UHF police radio coverage.
And that was prepared by?
By firm, under my direction.
Great. Thank you.
The, the exhibit consists of a Google Earth map as an underlay. And on top it are some shaded amoebas, so to speak. The different color shading represents different color signal levels. And where you have no signal, no color on the map, that shows we have unreliable service for public safety communications. The blue shading represents portable on-street-on-hip radio coverage. So this is an officer with a portable radio on his hip. And the yellow shading is okay coverage for the mobile radio. So that's kind of where we have the, the breakovers as far as whether or not we have good coverage or bad coverage. The blue says I've got good portable coverage. The yellow is the bottom where I have okay portable, okay mobile coverage. Where I don't have coverage, it means it's spotty. The chances are I may not, it's about a 50 50 shot, whether or not I'm going to have coverage or not have coverage on a mobile radio. Portable radio will be out of service. A mobile, which is a radio inside of a vehicle installed with a, with a, with a much stronger amplifier in it than a portable radio. And an antenna on top of the vehicle will have better coverage than a portable radio. Just the design of the system and that you have a much stronger transmitter when you have a mobile radio. And you have that antenna that's actually mounted on the car and the car X helps that antenna to work better than just a small antenna sitting on top of the portable radio. So for the county and the red line running diagonally from the top right to the bottom left, that is the county border. And that's the area that we're focused on is from Bloomsbury to the southwest, up along West Asbury Porter Road and Route 173 and Interstate 78. Interstate 78 runs across our map from left to right. Route 173 parallels the 78 all the way down to Bloomsbury. And then you have West Porter coming off of 173 going up towards, going up into Warren County all at the top of our map. All of this poor coverage is specifically due to terrain. It's, it's just the terrain. What we have is the sites that are much further into the county from here reach the top of all of these areas of the mountainous high, the mountains in these areas. And some of these mountains or hills or mountains, if you want to call them, are at 900 to 1,000 feet above sea level. The areas down below here are like 300 feet below sea level. So you basically just have this coverage is when you have good coverage way up high above here, but not down in the valleys of here. So it's all due to terrain. So the, the idea of this site was to put a site as close as possible up on the hill overlooking the Muskinupkin, Westkinupkin River Valley and to fill that area with, with our coverage. That's the purpose of the site is to fill it all in with coverage. So we identified the Jugtown Mountain Reserve site and put the, put the site in there. And then we were able to fill the coverage. So I'm going to now introduce A3 with today's date on it.
And if you can give us the title and who prepared that as well.
Title is Hunterdon County Public Safety Communications, Bethlehem Township, New Jersey, existing UHF police radio coverage and Jugtown Mountain Reserve 180 foot tower. So this is adding the Jugtown Mountain, and this was prepared by VCOM under my direction. This is now propagating from the, from the existing system and on top of that, the site here, the new proposed site here. We filled in the gap, Interstate 78, we filled in the gap for Route 173, we filled in Bloomsbury and the roads into and out of Bloomsbury. And we filled in, we're almost completely covered Asbury West Porter Road and the areas out to the county border. So this site fills the objective. We don't have perfect coverage through here, but we do have decent, we have enough global coverage through here. Portable coverage of one or two little spots in here might be, might be an issue. But for mobile coverage, we have mobile coverage all the way through here and all the way around the site. So that was the, the, the area that we really wanted to focus on. And that site worked. When we spoke at the open space meeting about four, it's four years ago now. They talked about an opportunity to look at the municipal tower. We do a municipal site here. So I'll look, we looked at the, the coverage from that site. And what we found is that the topography, and the best way to describe it is up on here where the municipal property is and where the Jugtown Mountain Reserve is, is all, is a plane about 900 feet above sea level. So it's a big table. So as you get further away, so in this case, further southeast of this table, what happens is you can't see over the table as well. And then the coverage drops off on West Porter. The other thing we found was just, just south west of Route 78, above Bloomsbury. The ridge comes in back where the, where the gap is between Bethlehem and Bloomsbury. There's a ridge here. And this ridge starts coming up in height. So when you look at it from the municipal tower, it actually starts to block Blooms coverage back in the Bloomsbury. And it's just, it's just due to where the topography is coming up in here. And that made Bloomsbury submit to the municipal property, same height tower, same ground, almost the same ground elevation. But we're pulling it back about 1,500 feet going to the southeast. So number one, we start losing coverage here. And number two, we started to start losing coverage in Bloomsbury because the terrain up in here actually blocked it from coming down here. As you move a little further north, you get around that because you're, instead of, instead of trying to go over an 800 foot ridge, you're going over 500 foot ridge. So that was just the line of sight. I just can't see over it. And what it really means is so if I'm trying to cover, and I'm going to use this as a demonstration, if I'm, if my tower is here and I'm trying to cover on the other side of that table onto the floor, if I pull, if, if, if the, in the table is in a diagonal, if I could get further and further above where that table is coming up, then I could see around it. Where I can't right now from the municipal property to Bloomsbury, I couldn't see it as a terrain boundary. And that was a problem up there. Personal opinion is, from a visual standpoint, the Jugtown Mountain Reserve is going to be less visible over a long period of time. The municipal property will always be visible for a long period of time. So it's from a visibility standpoint, that's, that's, that's opinions for everybody. I have a light tower, so that doesn't bother me. It may bother some people. And so we spoke about the property. I know that from a, we, we talked a little bit about in a summary, we're talking about a it's approximately a 40 by 60 area on top of the already cleared area there. We're going to use a 10 foot by 12 foot by 10 foot, three foot prefabricated shelter. And I believe we're still going to use it. Are we using the Nextel shelter? Yeah. So we're recycling and second, a shelter that Nextel had donated to the county. So we're going to use that. So it's a, to answer one of the questions I know was, was raised, it's about 10 feet, three inches tall. So that's the shelter we're going to be using. We're going to have 100 KW generator and that'll be a propane generator. So there'll be only one tank there. There'll be a propane tank. So very references to a diesel tank. It'll only be a propane tank. Typical question I get asked is zoning hearing, the generator is going to be tested weekdays between 10 AM and 4 PM and runs it for about 30 minutes every week. And, and it'll only run when the DEP says it's okay to run in cases of an, an air quality alert and it's, it will be much less than 65 D at the, 65 dB at the property line. Some other numbers that have come up at zoning hearings have been the closest residential dwelling is about 500 feet away. The closest residential property line is 400 feet away. There'll be no interference to public safety because it will be public safety. The RF energy at the base of the tower will be less than 1% of the FCC's limits on RF, RF emissions. And that will be the, the maximum point will be about 200 feet away from the base of the tower. And the number will be at least, it will be at least one, 100 times the FCC's numbers, about 1% of the FCC standards for a facility like this, which is typical of a public safety tower. One of the reasons it's a little bit less than a cell tower is that most of the radios are not continuous used. The cell phone tower is always on, always transmitting 24 hours a lot. A public safety radio is a push-to-talk radio, so it's not as on. So the RF energy is less just from a frequency of how much it's used. From the microwave dishes standpoint, the microwave dishes have absolutely the lowest amount of RF energy coming off of it. They're actually about a thousandfold lower than a cell tower or a public safety tower in RF emissions because all the energy is going straight out to the next site. So the, the antennas, these big antennas focus all that RF energy to a pencil point to the next, to the next tower. So there's very little RF energy below the tower. Typically it's about 10,000 times below what you would see at a normal cell tower or a public safety tower. That's a summary of what I've got. So I'm open to answering any of your questions.
The generator, what is the, the SPL on that? So when you're running the generator, how loud is it?
How what?
Loud.
It'll be less than 65 dB at the property line. Be much less than 65 dB. It'll be, it'll be, I, I don't know because I haven't, we haven't bought the generator yet. We haven't inspected yet. But a generator of this size will typically, typically at 100 feet, we see it at 65 dB. So I know at 400 feet away, it'll be way lower than 65 dB. Which is the, which is the Jersey Department of DUP protection.
A little bit under 60 dB down to 400 feet.
It should be much lower than that because you're doubling, you keep doubling it. Yeah, correct. It'll be at least 63, yeah, it'll be 60 dB down, but it'll be probably much lower than that.
Why can't you do this with multiple antennas instead of one?
I think it's a cost to the taxpayers. So once, once I can do this, so I would have to do multiple sites.
That kind of run along that ridge, you could actually put multiple antennas on those power lines and do the same thing.
We don't use power lines. The, the, in the power line industry, we don't, we, what? Pardon?
The towers that are existing.
Correct. We, the public safety industry as a whole doesn't use power lines. Some of the reasons why we don't use the power lines is the access to go fix the antennas. To go fix an antenna, we have to wait till the spring or the fall when they can shut the power lines down to go climb the towers. So we, we, there's very limited access to towers unless there's a specific emergency that we can get access to it. So we've been, we've been, the whole industry has shied away from using power towers because of access issues. And I think that's, that's been our biggest issue is getting, is being able to have 24 hour access to repair stuff. The, the amount of time to get coordinated, to get access to a tower, to a cell, to a power tower is much longer than we could, we could tower it with, with a major outage on a system. That, that is, that is probably the biggest reason.
These are push-to-talk state police uses that frequency band?
This is, no, this is UHF frequency band. UHF, state police uses 700, 800 megahertz. Yeah.
I have a question. What was the distance between our property here, the municipal building and the proposed site?
About 1,500 feet is what we were, what the property, the location we were asked to look at was the very back corner of the very southwest corner of the DPW section of the property. That was what we were told. It's about 1,500 feet from there.
No, I, I believe you are. I was just curious as to what the.
Yeah, that's what we were told. We could, that was what we were told was available to us.
How can cell phone companies put their antennas all over the attention towers? And you can't. I mean, they, they have to be able to service that as well.
They're a little bit more resilient in the amount of sites they have per area to do that. So for most of them right now, it's a capacity issue. So they can wait three, four, five days a week to get clearance to go up into a tower. We can't, in the public safety, you can't. If you've got, if you have a major outage with, with a tower completely down or antennas have been just, you know, damaged and we have to replace that antenna, we have to go up now to replace it. We don't have that luxury. In this case, if we lose this particular site of the UXF frequency band, we lose all that we just got from the police. And we have to wait till they allow us to go up there. So they have to create an outage on their system in order for us to go up there and work on that tower. They don't want us working on that tower with live, with live antennas, with live, with live power lines from a liability standpoint. They have to do a plan that.
Well, it sounds like it'd be more reliable to have multiple antennas than just one big tower.
We would have to go through this process, some process, like each one of those sites and a lot of those, and we would have to come up with the different sites to go through that. And we'd have to figure out how to get different sites. But this site does, at one site, I can do the whole job. And I can create a hardened site up here that will be more resilient for putting in microwave as opposed to leased lines. The microwave is much more reliable. We're putting on a backup generator. So we're not reliant upon anything from the outside to make this site work. The sites can also work. The sites can also work in something in, in, by themselves. So if it loses connectivity. To the main system, it can still operate locally. That the, that the officers and firemen and the local area can communicate with each other, even though they may not be able to communicate back to dispatch. So that's with one site, I can do all of that and cover that whole area. Making multiple sites just makes that many more possible vulnerable abilities.
I've got a question. So I think you mentioned that you're going to put the entire. Sixty by four in, on existing gravel that's there. Or is there going to be any disturbance to the parking area that's in there now? Any trees cut down or anything like that?
I believe we're doing everything on land that's often disturbed ready. The, I think the, we are. I don't believe there's anything being disturbed. New disturbance, everything, you know, I think that was, that was part of our approval was you couldn't stay within the confines of this, of this area and not outside of it. Use the access road and use this piece of land.
So then, that would make you think that. The park itself is losing parking spots or, you know, some of that's just for people doing the park.
I, I can't speak to that.
I can say for sure, but I spoke to Bill Balet, he's our open space coordinator today. And he led me to believe that there was no loss in park. So he says disturbed doesn't necessarily mean the parking, you know, there's area around.
Okay, I think there's like the grass area that.
And if anyone's thinking, I went to council, um, we're looking into whether we need to get any special approvals or anything from them. We're hoping because the area is disturbed already that there won't be any problems, but we're going to check in with them and just make sure that everything is. The way that, but I, I was told to Bill Balet that the. Parking will not be decreased and in fact, the roads in will be made better. Because in order to get that equipment in there to build that tower, they're going to have to improve that road slightly. So it could actually make it. I know I've never driven in there. That's not the, um, most welcoming driveway in the county department that you have. And I, I've lived in this town for thirty-nine years and I've never driven in this town.
I'm going to take the little sports car in there.
I've got an SUV and I keep it on the way here. I've got a few minutes maybe. I'm like, not in the yard. So it may actually improve, um, people wanting to go in there if they. Maybe nothing else to see what's going on.
Speaking of lighting, I actually have a question. I guess the site will be on censored lighting. Should a truck need to go in there at night or does the site itself on the ground need to be lit and concerned?
Great question. And we can do it any one of three ways. You can do a dawn to dusk light. It's always on. We can do a light that's on a photo, uh, uh, motion sensor. So when something comes through. Or we can do no light, but put a light on a timer. Where we go in there and as soon as you get there, you put the outside light and turn the timer over with the flashlight. You go over there, you put the timer on. And it goes on for as many hours as you set the timer to. So we can do four, eight, ten hours. Depending on what it is, and then it just goes out after a time. So we can do any of those kind of, those lights. So if there's a preference or no preference. We're, we're okay with any of those options.
And thinking about a sensor, I'm like thinking that might not be the best thing because of the animals.
Correct. Exactly what that is. Yeah.
Lot of wildlife.
Those three apples certainly the timers.
Towers. And that, and that's what we, that's what we typically do in an area like this is just put the timer on. Somebody comes in with his headlights. He puts it on the door, gets out of his truck, turns the timer on and always got light, light in that area for a long time. So we can add, that's, that's typically the way we do it.
You have a diagram or some proposed locations for those lights?
They would be on the, I, I. Yeah, that's. Yes.
What have you seen as far as, I mean, again, we don't have a whole lot of crime out here, but that being a park, there's very limited access. There's limited. Amount of people back there. Rangers don't, don't, don't sit back there. Um, you do something as far as, uh, a camera, a motion camera, something to record. For yourselves. We've had issues down at the park at, at our. That, you know, buyer incidents happen.
Um, typically what we've done at most, at, at a site like this, that, that, to try to. Make it less of the track and uses, we use the very smaller train links. So it's much harder for somebody to climb over the fence. As opposed to using normal sized two inch train lines that they can't stick their toes in there. It's much harder to climb above there. Um. But I can, we can. Yeah, we can.
Very important part of our tower work is that, um. The, the first option is for municipal property. But then the, you know, the next three or four options are co-location on whatever. You know, one of them being, you know, farm silos or anything like that. We know that we do have some cell towers in the valley. Um, along seventy-eight. Have you looked into using any of those co-locating on any of those, um, existing cell towers?
It would require multiple sites then. It's just that, that much more money for the taxpayers, the county to pay to do. One of those and then come up with another site that complements it to try to cover it. But that's, that's the issue. This one fills in all the, all of the area. In one, with one site. And it's, you know, it's set back away from everything else. So that's, that's one of the reasons we picked it that way.
Yeah. So again, part of our organs is that we would require the applicant, I know that you don't have to do this, but. Uh, we would require the applicant show the coverage from different locations. And basically you've only showed us coverage from one location, which is your preferred. Could we see coverage from, you know, from individual sites like that?
I can, but that's just, but it's good to delay us, have to come back. And show more sites and then, then how do we decide what sites work and what sites work? And if it turns out in the three cell towers. Does the county taxpayer pay for three, through three co-locations? As opposed to one tower? I mean, it's your, it's your money, not mine.
Is a co-location more expensive or cheaper than building a whole tower and a whole facility? You know, maybe you, we could, you know, especially if, if it's an existing cell tower. You know, owned by a cell company, they might be willing to, you know, cut the, the county a bit of a break, you know, for goodwill. I mean, you know, maybe that is something that would help, you know.
In, in, in a six to seven hundred thousand dollars, is this seven, about seven hundred thousand dollar project? About three hundred thousand to tower, four hundred thousand dollar is. All the equipment that goes on the ground. All the microwave antennas, all the backup. To make sure we have a hardened site. So as I go out and add, so after that second site, I've just with two sites, now I'm the same. And I got to rely upon that wireless carrier to get access to their tower. And they charge unless you had it written in the, because I'm doing this today. Unless you had it written in the ordinance. That prove that tower is a public safety tower. Uh, made available to public safety, no charge, then they charge just like they charge a site worker. For all these guys, American Tower, SBA, Crown, Verizon, AT&amp;T, unless it was part of the agreement. And the approval of that tower. To put public safety on that tower. Then you have to, then you, then you're paying to get access to that tower and having access to the ground. So now I gotta go find. A tower that works. Go study it structurally, go figure that part out and where I can go on that tower. And I got to put microwave on there, which typically makes the. Makes the leasing of that tower much more expensive. I'm dealing with that right now in, in two different counties. And one town that I'm trying to get onto existing, existing wireless towers for a public safety, for a public safety system. And it's, it's become a problem because they said, well, you're, the, the tower wasn't approved. I didn't get, I, by approval for that tower, we didn't have to say that we're going to put public safety on it. So we're going to charge like a site worker. And now that you want to put microwave on it, it's more expensive. So the idea with the microwave is to make it more hardened. So I'm not buying lease lines from the cable company. Or from Verizon, whoever the wire, wireline carrier is, I could do that. So now I've, now the expense is now racking up where I can do it one site and I got to find multiple sites and delay the project. Anywhere from three months to two to three years to negotiate all those leases and all those deals to fill what I can do here.
Uh, one, one, one point to the presentation, uh. Said right now, co-location from, from cell towers is not taking place. Is the design of this tower designed, taking into consideration that possibly self, self companies in the future could use it?
We haven't designed the tower yet. We have specs. Ready to give out to the, we have specs ready to give to our engineer to put together the final power specs. I can easily add on. If the radio equipment here to the spec, so I can, so what it, it was basically putting in more steel. And more concrete, stronger steel and more concrete in the ground. Then at the future time. If all the approvals are gotten, you can put cellular on this tower. As long as it, you know, as long as they demonstrate that they wouldn't interfere with the, the usage that's already on the tower. But the tower can be designed to do that.
To be honest, with the most towns, we would go to would say cell tower, no, no cell tower, radio only. So that's why. But knowing the unique characteristics of this section of the township, I said that.
It's a part, it is a part of the town that suffers, you know, immense. And, you know, naturally it's. So it's going up, it makes sense. And then by the same token, it's helping the taxpayer of the county now. For whatever, you know. Is, is gotten from any cell companies down the road. So. Makes sense to design it in now, even if it's not used. So Jim and I disagree with Mr. Jack. Same, that, the five G, because you work ahead of that, have more cell towers in this country. Yeah. A lot more. Um, and as far as, um, it is the, the parking area of, of the park, the fencing is. Is right in front of you when you would be parking. Is there a plan on, on some shrubbery, some greening off of the fence?
It can, absolutely, it could be.
Yeah. You know, I mean, you know, they do have the green grass standing. At least, you know, I, I'm thinking people at the park, they really don't want to see metal and silver in front of them. You know, it's, but you know, the, the question's going to come from a lot of people that are not part of tonight. You know, this is, this is parkland. This is supposed to be green forever. Um. You know, we can make it as green as possible. Uh, I'd like to see that. However, that happens.
So as I said, I have the county architect.
Okay.
He said, we can do green fence, we can do shrubbery. It's our parkland, so that's.
Exactly.
We want it to be.
It's a benefit of, of everybody. I mean, it's just, but the, there's still people out there that are not going to. Technology in a park, they don't want to see it. So.
Okay, we go hiking.
We make it, we make it as easy for everybody's box. We can't hide the tower, but we can hide some of that enclosure. Can you change, you will get the generator and the. Container or something like that to get it down. I mean, again, floating up here, it's very nice to be able to listen to the birds and everything else, then you have a generator. If it's sixty-five DB SPL.
They have, that's going to run. You said everyone else is going to be running?
I mean, I mean, the reality is most, most of it.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Extra, that's, that's all in enclosures.
All right. So to answer your question, yes, it's going to be a, it's going to be in an enclosure. It's going to have the critical buffalo on it. It only runs, you know, once a week for thirty minutes. And any other time it's running. It's running because there's no power in the area.
Sixty-five DB SPL at a hundred feet. Is, um. Give you an idea what that is. So now.
I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the norm.
It's loud. So I'll think if you're parking a car out there or something like that, I think it's going to be screaming. Right? If I'm standing ten feet away.
Yeah, you're going to hear it. If you're ten feet away, you're going to hear it.
It's going to be almost, uh. Pretty painful, right?
No, it will not be pretty. I don't have the generator specs in front of me. I'm just saying that it meets all the NGD, DEP specs. For a generator. It is only working a half hour a week. When it's being tested and any other time it's using, it does not have to be DEP respects because it's being used in an emergency situation for emergency communications. So does not have to meet the DEP requirements if there's a power outage. They're throwing out. But it does. It meets it. Because if it, it meets it. That's what I'm saying. It meets the DEP requirements. Has to be below sixty-five DB. At the property line, fifty-five DB at night at the property. And if it's being used, if the generator is going out at night, it's because there's a power outage.
And the county will purchase the quietest generator we can to do the job and we'll insulate it and do everything we can to keep it.
Are there any questions from the public that might be online? On Zoom? I just want to see if there's any expert answers on here.
Nash is.
No, it's the person. Any motion to the public? On there. This.
I have a residence four hundred feet away.
All right. Can you say, say your name and.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. One second. Are we moving from questions of this witness to overall public comment?
Questions of this witness from the public.
Okay, okay. Go ahead. And we need, and so name, name and address.
Angelo Valenti, four hundred and six Nine Road. How visible will the tower be? That's pretty much my concern. When I go into my backyard. I don't want to look at it. Can we try to hide it? Is there any way to put greenery up the entire thing? I don't know. I realize it's a necessity, but can we try to hide it the best we can?
It's, it, I don't know where your, I know, I know where your property is. I know where your property is. I don't know what the visibility is from your property in the direction of that area of the, of the reserve. So I don't, I, so there's four hundred feet between you and that tower. And I, I just know that it's all trees. I don't know the height of the trees. But it's a significant amount of tree buffer between you and that tower. It's the most visible time of year would be now. And since it's a lattice tower with a lot of vertical members, it's going to look, it's going to blend into all of the trees that are in between you. And there in the summer, you're not going to see it because of yellow leaves on the trees. But in the winter, you have a four hundred foot tree buffer between you and the tower. So typically we'll, we wouldn't see the tower only because of all the vertical lines of the lattice tower. And they're less of a lower diameter than most of the trees in that area.
Okay. All right.
Looks like it's, it would be located like diagonally behind. Your property. So.
Yes. My hope is as far right to the vomit spot.
Cars that are.
I think if I get my backyard, I think these vehicles as they drive back.
But not.
But after they hit a certain point, no, even a white car ranger vehicle, completely hidden from view. But that's my other concern. You said, oh, we're going to widen the driveway. I like it.
I understand why they put, with the truck time to improve, they can get it, the rust and that. But understood, it's still a park, it's still rural. We don't, we're not putting highway in yet.
Any, any other questions? Um, questions first. Mr. Lindsay, anything specifically?
No, I'm good for now. I'll just review some stuff. I'm good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
In a second.
So. I do have one other.
Hi.
Hi. Um. Have you done four holes or anything in, in this site? To, because you do understand that this was a former iron line.
Great question. Yes, we did. We did, so we did it specifically for that reason, we went down to go see, make sure we had, we had no issues with the soil below it. And we did, it was all clear.
Yeah, it's not the soil below, it's the cabbage.
Exactly, exactly. That was, all of us in the team had those questions. Very early on, let's get out there and let's go do some, let's go do the boards and make sure we were okay with it and what's, what's going on. Great question though.
Okay, just, yeah, two things. For the fence to not be like a black clay. Fence, not. Galvanized, you know, something that.
Do you want a black or you want a green?
It doesn't matter. Typically, black kind of disappears. Um, we had black. Shine, shine. Um, the other thing is, is that I believe the organization has provisioned that. If antennas are no longer utilized on the tower, that the tower is removed. Is that something that county would agree to?
Is that something that county would agree to?
I don't think we anticipate ever not needing this tower, but.
But technology changes and if it ever changes, because that is one of the things that, that is the ordinance. If it becomes inactive or the antennas are no longer used, the tower has to.
Is this gonna be a county owned tower or is it like.
Yes. No, it's a county, it's a county town. County funded, county everything.
No lease payments. Leading stop sign, it'll be the devil.
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
So that's all we have. Of course, I do have Brad Fany from Emergency Management. I have our county architect and our administrator. If there are any additional questions, I think most of your questions missed the term. But they are here in support of it, but also if you had any needed questions on public safety.
Just for the sake of our residents, I know there's concerns beyond, Mr. Blant, they were putting a tower there. Mr. Fady to share, there's some. I would say incidents that, you know, I don't think it directly does. The reasoning for having a tower, I know, we just saw the obvious, the science behind having the tower, but I think the importance of, you know, I know I've been unseen myself. Sure. So I've seen the lack of radio communication.
Yeah, you know, the, his name or parent, I'm sorry, Brad Fany, the county's director of public safety and emergency management coordinator. Good, what was introduced earlier?
Just raise your right hand, just so we can swear in. Uh, swear the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Wonderful. Thank you.
The graphics speak to it. To the mayor's point, we see frequently anywhere that there's a dead spot, it's reported to us, but, you know, the Pattonburg agencies, the Bloomingdale Fire Company, it's time and again where they're trying to get a, you know, a radio message out and they can't. So it's, it's almost too numerous to list. At this point, you know, certainly we could come up with a list for the body if that was, you know, of something that's of interest. But it's, you know, anywhere that there's not coverage on any given day, we're, we're kind of feeling the effects. There've been a few recent fires, I think in the last year, where we've seen, you know, fire coverage really suffer from it. So it's, it's frequent at this point.
For the chairman, I don't really need a list, but I, I, that was just from, from my perspective, I think even residents who don't sit on the plan board.
Yeah.
They're having, you know, more real life interaction beyond saying, you know, the UHF, you know, percentage drops and such and such. What's, what's the, you know, what's on the ground reality of?
Yeah, you know, so it's, the concern that we always have is, you know, obviously if it's a fire incident, you know, it's the signal reaching our dispatchers. If there's an emergency on the fire ground, likewise, if it's an ambulance response to that location, uh, you know, they need to get something from our dispatchers as well. They're in someone's house. That's really the only link, right? Between like, at least the quickest link between the units that we're sending and what's going on at that scene back to the dispatch center. So if we can't rely on the radio signal, you know, the issues that that we could face really start to mount and mount. Is to kind of go, something the mayor just said, is it something? Not necessarily details, but if it's a, you know, you know, uh, one in ten. Callouts don't connect or something like that, or is it, you know, one in a hundred? Or, you know, is it, is it that large number or it's coming back to a much more common number? I mean, I know it's, it's area dependent. I mean, you got seventy eight winding out.
Yeah.
But nobody wants to have that, that whole conversation of, you know, that they can't get out for an emergency, you know. You know, they're thin air, you're running up and down the side of the highway trying to connect. Does it happen where it's one out of ten calls has a problem? Cause from a public standpoint, I, I think that would make a lot more sense. Yeah, I, I would say, and a number of our staff can speak to it as well. I would say it's probably more common than that, frankly. You know, our hazardous materials response team responds to this section of the interstate pretty frequently. And it's pretty common that, you know, that there's a, we experience some sort of radio coverage issue. Trying to reach one of the other units, you know, trying to reach the units that have gotten there before us. Uh, you know, and it's not just the interstate. It's again, it's everywhere that's depicted in that graphic, you know, we could have and have had issues. And I would. I mean, Bloomingdale is a big town. There's a lot of, it's a dense town. So. Yeah. Yeah, there's. Yeah, you know, again, it's, it's, that's only one part of it. You know, we, this is, it's, it's just a, a rough area. And it's, you know, Mr. Stern stated, it's the, the topography, you know, in this area specifically, it's tough to get, you know, signal shots in and out, so.
When I was putting this presentation together, what I thought of is when emergency responders were out on Jobtown Mountain, how many times have people crossed over the Jersey Bay? Terrible accidents and then another accident happens because of, so if you had first responders who now need emergency services because somebody came across, you know, during an accident scene. And now they need to get calls out to get more people because they can't help the people that they're help. So that's what I thought of when I was putting this together is that, you know, DOT is out there, you know, the county's hazmat teams out there, or fire and rescue are out there, EMS. But if they need help, those people that we send in for help, if they need help, how are they gonna, they're gonna have to find a trooper, you can call in, or someone's gonna have to find their cell phone, but if it's a wreck and cell phones won't fly.
In the, you know, the areas where the gap exists, I think one out of ten is probably conservative. I think it happens even more frequently than.
I'm sorry, sorry, you know, Bloomingdale Fire, you bring up, like they've shared with me, that's just consistent is the best way of describing it, the back end of seventy eight. And then exactly what you're saying is they're, you know, they're out and they can't use their mobile radio. If you go back to a truck, then even that's not the best.
Yep.
That was on scene, I guess it was two thousand eighteen, the house, the house fire, Bloomingdale right at the edge of the back end board, right behind sicko. And state police had to divert from Barn County, uh, because they needed to use the state police radios and cars to communicate because the radios didn't work at all. And so they couldn't actually organize the tanker trucks coming in and out. It's, you know, being there was frantic and it was, it was difficult to see first responders not being able to communicate to effectively fight the fires. They couldn't coordinate protectors coming in and out with different agencies. So I've seen it, but again, it's our responsibility to balance, you know, our residents understanding of it. I think it's, I think it's necessary. So, you know, I'd say advocate for it. Not knowing, there's no other really place to put it, but also want everybody to understand the reasoning behind it and the, the emergent need for it. We don't know, you know, even though you don't need approval, that we're not taking this lightly or just nodding our heads and saying, you know, yes, we, we've asked the county for a lot over the past few years, just. You know, current administration, previous, you know, administration, the past three years, we've all asked. And you've all answered those questions, you know, for us, which we appreciate, but we want to make sure that the residents are comfortable with the best of those questions.
Oh, sure. We understand that. You know, I would say from the county's perspective as well, it's, it's not a, oh, you know, lay hard as a matter for us to want to build a tower. We understand everything that comes along with it. Um, and it, you know, it falls on me to be able to articulate why it's so important when we pick a site. And we, you know, we try to follow through. I think the two maps really do, the whole propagation maps of the current with the future really speaks for itself. I agree. That, that's, that's a huge, for one tower, I think that's a huge, huge improvement of town.
I think a lot of you can pick out your houses on that map.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent with that, but it is our responsibility, especially, uh, uh, you know, our ordinance specifies that, that, you know, that we look into other sites for clarification and things like that. So, yeah, that's why we have to ask those questions. And I think, yeah, we've asked those questions, they've been answered and, and this is the only site for it until, you know, I think that we've done our to build it. That, you know, at this point, you know, now it's just make it as nice as we can possibly make it for the people who use a park. Sure.
And the residents around it.
Yeah. All right. So, uh, need a motion to open the public for any kind of other comments?
The question open the public?
Second. Close it there. And any other public questions, either on Zoom or in the audience? How easy this was, huh?
You don't actually.
Motion close. Did you motion close?
So move.
Close it there. Okay.
The only thing we would ask is if you could send a letter to your zoning officer, just letting him know that we're here and we take care of that school.
I actually had, Mr. Chairman, I actually just had a couple of questions. Um. Katrina, you talked about the fact that there was gonna be five more acres added to the park. Um, is it the county's plan to do a new meets and bounds description for the entirety of the park for green acres? Is that that amend the zone zoning map or the tax map? How's that gonna work?
I don't think so. I can check with Bill Milep, but my understanding is I think we're just gonna add lot fifty one to our raw scene, so it will be included in parkland areas, which just seems to be the easiest, cleanest way to do it. Let's just add that. Don't, because it's a whole block and lot, we can just add it when we update our policy.
Okay, that's perfect. Just wanted to know that. Um, and then I, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, if, unless I missed it, we, we want to open it up to the public just for general comments, unless they didn't have any. And then I had a couple, uh, recommendations that the board might want to consider making. Um, so I'll throw them out there now. Um, obviously, the testimony has been that the generator and all components of the tower and its, um, operational systems are gonna comply with the state noise requirements unless there's an applicable exemption. Tom mentioned something about, I think it was a black galvanized fence, uh, so that would be a recommendation. Uh, also the recommendation regarding the removal of antennas on the tower when they're not in use. Um, and I, I couldn't quite hear, and I'm sorry, the three options for lighting. Um, so the board may want to make a recommendation as to which one of those it prefers. Um, I know there was a timer option and then there were two others.
The only one we care about was the timer.
And in addition, uh, just to that, cause I was making a list of things you were asking for, um, there was a discussion about security cameras. Uh, and there was a discussion about screening and landscaping. Uh, I think that's everything. In addition to what I already mentioned.
Yes.
We're not putting a gate at the road.
It's open to the public, the parkland, so.
But not at night.
And someone would have to come.
That's all I have to do.
The Rangers in there every night.
That's a good.
I had, I thought of one other question. Is there any, um, fire suppression equipment in there? Is that typical for that type of tower?
Yes.
And, I mean, besides just a handheld, I'm sure it's an automated.
Yes.
I'm sure. Halon? It's a good one.
It's, it's approved, it's replacement. That's like, we. We all grow a halon in some. I don't know what it's called, but it, it, there is a replacement to it. It's much less toxic, toxic and toxic for the environment. Yeah, we all, we all grow a halon.
All right. Can I just ask, what's the expected timeline on this? I know that it's a total, last of, total guess, but. When to begin construction, when to complete construction, what, what do you think that might look like? I guess I should speak that I could be like.
Power works gonna have the architect is gonna, where I have.
Right. Uh, just for the testimony, I'm about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And I, I believe that was you speaking before, so the testimony you've given up until this point has been and will be the truth. Uh, could you spell it in for the record please?
And my name is Frank Bell, I'm the county architect for county of Putridin.
Great, thanks Frank.
This is in the state of New Jersey. Okay, uh, as far as timeline is concerned, uh, I'm actually managing all of the schedules for the county at this point for this project. Uh, first step was, of course, to come back to the board, get, get approval. Uh, then this next step is to go to the zoning officer to get, to get him to approve that zoning permit. Then we're going to the billing, billing department, get that approval. Once we have all these approvals, we'll then get it ready for bidding. So I probably would say, we'll probably bid this sometime in January-ish roughly around that range. Um, get it out. Uh, get the bits back in February, March roughly in that range, and it will start construction sometime this spring. So looking at, you know, probably April-ish to, uh, to start construction, of course, there's going to be lead times of equipment that we'll have to be dealing with. And, um, project duration, do we have a project duration form on that?
Usually about four to six months, but it really depends on lead times for steel.
Yeah.
And generator, what generator depends where you're. General times of construction, I mean, times of day, disturbed residents and stuff like that, just.
And general times of construction would be usually from seven in the morning till, till three in the afternoon typically. I mean, summertime, it can vary because it's really hot out. Sometimes they'll start early in the morning and they'll finish earlier, uh, but that can depend. But, but generally not any more than three, three, four o'clock in the afternoon.
So could this function without a generator temporarily until the generator is located there?
Typically, we're not want to run a, an antenna without.
We'll bring in a portable generators and we'll design the shelters that has a plug on it. So we can bring a portable generator in and then we'll run that generator when there's a power outage. But if they come up here and that, we'll start that, um, to get that to work, but that would be until the, uh, generator.
So we could pump the one without the, the specified generator.
There's a, uh, block of plants.
Right.
Yeah. You know, you're gonna be busy finding up here to start that. Eat this power all the time.
Bring my hundred dollar.
Get a generator, you need it. That's when you don't have a generator.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We could open it for general public comment?
In the forum, Karen.
Okay, great. Just make it sure.
All right. The meeting minutes from the number fourteen.
Well, we go, hold on, hold on. We need a vote and we need a vote on the recommendations, if any, that we want to make, uh, with regard to the, the matter.
As well, just to.
On the recommendations only?
To tell.
To tell. Take a motion to.
We allow this, we can move that.
Give appropriate permissions to these on officers.
All right. So we basically, uh.
We authorized the zoning officer.
We're authorizing the zoning officer to issue a zoning clearance, um, for, for our county for the. Block lot member, uh. Yeah, block thirty two, lot fifty five, um. Noting the conditions, the recommendations.
And did you tell on anything with regard to lighting or we're just going to let the county make that?
We're using our timer with, with, with county approved security measures.
Black plastic fencing.
Black, black fencing. Generator noise below this, the state DEP required sixty five decibels.
Yep.
And the county removing the tower in the future is not. Sounds like everything. And, and, and landscaping to, um, disguise the enclosure to the best of the ability by accounting for their own park.
We have a tree ward.
That's recommended planting, if you like. So I need that motion made.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second. That will call.
Former?
Yes.
Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Ken Shalay?
Yes.
Jose Maderas?
Yes.
Brad Nelson?
Yes.
Ryan Messing?
Yes.
Steve Dugorensel?
Yes.
Jeff Paletti?
Yes. All right. All right. So and then if this is the beginning of next January, the tree ward just kicks in. Buy trees. No ban. No ban.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for taking the time.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Alright. And so we have the meeting minutes for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Very detailed. I just thought after twenty years of trying to get to one of this, I'll, we should detail what we're.
Nice to have minutes to actually tell us what this.
I just felt like if, if you don't have the detail, then everyone's gonna want to ask for the reportation. That's a lot.
It's gonna be a big, big change for residents of the town, for sure, it's just, again, it's been a long time coming, but I think it's very fair to everybody involved.
Under correspondence. From the county. That's from the county. Who has those we court? Thank you. Make a motion to accept this. The law.
Second. Discussion changes?
Yeah. The lead V L I D. Where? On the last page of this. Judy's update? Judy's, uh. Number one. It's the lead V L I D two.
How is it spelled, I'm sorry?
V L I D two.
And I'll second the. See that? Alright, was it better?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Epstein, Epstein.
Extensions.
We can't, we gotta take the vote. I'm sorry. We know there's no way they could vote.
I think she's saying that everybody, even people who weren't there.
Okay, we'll call, we'll figure it out, alright, Paulmier?
If we're against.
Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Ken Shalay?
Yes.
Jose Madera?
Yes.
Brad Nelson?
Epstein.
Ryan Messing?
Epstein.
Steve De La Renta?
Yeah.
Jeff Paletti?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, anybody have any comments, questions for the board? Yes.
Well, is it possible?
Just to stay it in one more time?
And yellow, the light?
Okay.
Is it, it's black fencing, brown fencing, is it possible to make the tower brown or black? Is it darkened metal, or no?
Yeah, I think the, the problem with making it a darker color is that what you really want to do is blend into the sky.
Okay.
So I think the, and it, it also has to be galvanized, so that it doesn't rust. But I think that you're better off having it kind of, you know, that it, you're looking at it up, so you want to blend it with the stuff. And that's, that's the nice thing about lattice towers. That they're, you know, kind of.
There, there is a lattice tower, which is, it looks very, just all five seventy nine. So if you're going through, or even from the truck stop, you can, you can kind of look up and see it, it's, you don't really see it. It, it does, it does blend in, I mean, you, you see it, but it's. Was it there?
Aye.
Aye.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I was looking at a lot of updates, I was being done, we, uh, storm waters, we're waiting for a here and there. Obviously, no, still affecting our budget, we're still trying to figure out what we need for twenty twenty three, as far as live ordinances, and everything else we're facing, the county's, we're not the only town, I'm sure it's that issue, it's like the tier B and A, and figure out how to address. Uh, so we're still working on that, uh, based on last meeting, the township meeting, I'm still, Judy's done, we're just gonna know that the township committee did approve, uh, the tree ordinance and the park ordinance. The only reason I'm stealing Judy's thunder is the parking ordinance has generated a lot more questions than the tree ordinance. Uh, so as land board members, uh, I would suggest, you know, being prepared to answer those questions, we've directed people to myself and the administrator, to try to have a central point of, of understanding. And I'll state it here again, you know, on the record, the intent is not to repugnate, but to give the state police a tool when they need it for public safety, so the roads aren't blocked from emergency vehicles. Uh, so the intent is not to have the state police go out and patrol our roads and local vehicles parked on the roads, but, uh, when a resident has a complaint, um, and a serious concern, they now have a tool to use. Uh, so, uh, we've shared with residents, uh, to contact the state police, much as many towns with local police departments do, if they're gonna have cars parked on the street, or if they're having some work done to their driveway, or some other maintenance issue that requires them to park. The street, or family visiting, or social gatherings, uh, we'll work with the state police, uh, as we said, the administrator. Will be working with the state police to make sure that they understand the ordinance, and again, not that we're gonna do that. Uh, but I just wanted members of the board to, if you haven't already been approached by residents, to know that, you know, they know you're on the planning board, you may have got those questions. Uh, and then, um, just on the, uh, I like the happy notes on the, uh. So, uh, December tenth is our heart of Christmas celebration, and we are Bethlehem Township after all, so the, we are the heart of Christmas in Hunterdon County, so. It starts at three in the afternoon, and then our department is parked and runs until ten o'clock with a variety of activities, there may even be a wrestling match between Santa Claus and the Grinch. Sharing, that might be our special, uh, place, uh, once the holidays, we've got the township, uh, the tree lighting, uh, it'll be, I think it starts seventh year now for tree lights, the tree lighting will be, of course, a central part of that. And our cross town troops are still, are still running that, and then December fifteenth, before our township meeting, our volunteer of the year awards have returned, so if you'd like to join us at six forty five, meeting starts at seven thirty. Six forty five, we'll have some light refreshments, some social activity, and, uh, social interaction, and, uh, give out our three volunteer of the year awards for twenty twenty two. That's it?
Yeah.
We have our, actually, we have our recipients, uh, since we already paid it public, uh, outgoing comedian, Harvey Randolph, uh, Barney Mar, who many, you know, through the schools, and, uh, scouting programs. And Melissa Dior, Beckowitz, who, uh, we, as they started, we expanded our holiday celebration, and is the chairperson of that art of that.
Thank you, Judy.
I do have my own, thank you. I just saw this, this came to the committee, I don't know if you saw this yet, Paul, uh, from Highlands, um, came in this, this afternoon about two fifteenish. Um, so I just would like to bring this to get the boards, you know, want me to, um, research this further, I will. Um, came from Highlands, um, regarding warehousing, especially in the rural communities. Um, I won't go through the whole letter, the whole emails quite deeply, but the key is the Highlands Council is offering a non-competitive grant opportunity to all eighty-eight municipalities in the Highlands region. The local zoning, local control grant will provide an initial grant of up to five thousand dollars to review your community's current zoning. To ensure that all potential as-of-right development permitted by the zoning ordinance is consistent with the community's vision for the municipality and its citizens. Basically, what that means, it's sort of a, a stop-get measure, um, for warehouse development, so if the board would like, um, I'll call, I'll call both our planner and Judy Gordon this week, and have a better update for the board and for the committee. See what this is all about, sounds kind of interesting.
Be careful with the thunder.
That's it.
I consider they, some of that are any area that could happen in warehouses. It's good to review.
Yeah, I think it's good, you know, if they're offering, but might not take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, Paul, you're here?
No. Nothing, unless there's any questions anybody has for them.
Oh, um, the, uh, the flood, have we gotten the review back?
Yes, we got, we got the review back, uh, they had one comment on the definition of hardship, because I disagree with them on the language, but they're pushing hard on it, so it's just, it's semantics in there, so, but they, they basically approved it.
So will we be introducing it everywhere?
Be reintroduced, it'll be introduced everywhere, and then it'll be coming to the.
To here.
To the planning board and the tree org, uh, and then back to the.
So, thank you.
Monica?
Um, I sent out the email, um, the, um. I have no, that RFQ, it's required for qualifications, I sent all of that out for our professionals, so that we can have that, so we can, we can introduce that, so that we can do that for next meeting, obviously. Um, and, yeah, that was, I just want to make sure we have a chance to look at that before you're sitting there and trying to.
Did our firm find out that we only met once, did she?
She's lovely.
Yeah, she is great, but. We've only met her once.
She's already brought in a hundred thousand grand.
Yeah.
I'm happy with it. That's why I'm making sure that she was, she had said that.
Yes.
This plan is simply the hardest thing to, to ask. And what was happening?
I have a comment and a question, um, so as somebody who missed the last meeting, I just want to reiterate my thanks to Monica for the robust meeting minutes of the last meeting. Um, but my question is, I thought we'd been recording these meetings for publication on the township website, and to my dismay, I went to look for the recording of the last planning board meeting, and it was nowhere to be found. Are there plans to actually make that happen, or are we not doing that anymore, or?
Well, I was, I have asked Lou, and we're gonna get together so that he has a library, so that you can go down through, like, the township committee has it, makes them orderly, and so. I want him to make that township site, so that everything, you can go back three months and, you know, listen to what you want to, but you can also get the meet, the final meeting minutes and the final agenda. Lou's on there.
Yeah, we've got them, uh, we've got every, we've got all the recordings done, actually, uh, and a couple of weeks ago, we began reorganizing the way recordings are posted. We did that first for the township committee, which I think is pretty much up to date, and we'll go back and do that for the, uh, planning board. We don't have recordings going back forever for the planning board or the township committee for that, for that matter, we might, probably most of them for this calendar year, though. We'll get those posted, but I just wanted to make sure that people were happy with the way that we were organizing them now on the website.
No, that's good, I mean, honestly, I would think that the priority is the last few, more so than, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what, what I'll do is I'll get the last couple up, and you can take a look at the way I'm trying to get these organized, and if everyone is agreeable at the next meeting, we'll start posting the rest of them.
Okay, so, as a, as a planning board member, you are entitled to come listen to the tapes, uh.
No.
To familiarize yourself, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was, it was, again, the, the minutes were excellent, so that was a nice to fall, but certainly nice to fall back on, but I'm also thinking about the rest of the public. They certainly want the information at a time in there, especially if they don't have an opportunity to attend in person or on Zoom, we have the technology to do it, just. Want to see it.
And I guess I should say that anybody can help for them as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And I always have the audio recording.
Right.
So, if we don't have the video, we always have the audio, so we, you know, either the public can they go through, is that how we do it? So it's always available.
That's it? You want to do a job? Phil, Phil, Steve?
Was it better?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, have a good night.